Your second one. Televised, second, third televised?
Okay, we're on. And we're gonna, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of Oh, Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all white scum's command. With flowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, Lindsey, you're good. Absent with regrets, we're good, too. Uh, declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? And you can call the conflict at the time, it comes up on the agenda if you wish. Approval of agenda. Um, I have one, I'll put on thirteen A, letter regarding environment. Do we have any more additions? And actually, let's do thirteen B, um, video. Thirteen A was letter to environment. And then B is a video re-clean-up. I just wanna get that off the box. Anything else? Sorry, didn't see that yet. Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, I have, uh, three items. Um, I have a request for decision regarding the negotiation of sale or of all or a portion of the Yarmouth International Airport lands. That was circulated to council yesterday.
So thirteen C, RFD Airport.
That's right. I also have a, and it's been circulated on your desk this evening, the results of the grant process for your consideration.
That's D.
And I also have an in-camera item, uh, dealing with a land transaction.
Okay, so I'll just put that under sixteen, uh, land. Uh, anything else, anyone?
I'll get mine under, uh, maybe questions to chairs, your worship.
Okay, you're good with that?
I'm good as well.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, so when we ask questions for chairs, you guys can just speak up?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. All right, a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
Second, your worship.
Okay, councillor Barry, deputy mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Approval of minutes, water utility, March fourteenth, please. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, public hearing, March fourteenth. Councillor Barry, second by deputy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, that was me and you, deputy. Guess everybody else forgot to vote. Town council. Town council, March fourteenth.
Second, your worship.
Councillor Barry, deputy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Committee of the whole, April second.
So moved, second.
Deputy councillor Barry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Whew, town council, April second.
So moved, your worship.
Deputy councillor Barry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thanks, folks, there's a lot of meetings. No presentation. Business arising, we good there? Did councillor Hood have something?
No, I got certain, it wasn't item A, I'm lying, my, my, uh, under your seven A, water utility, that's coming up later, under the, uh...
Yes, yes.
It's coming up.
Right on. Under eleven, good step.
And it's quick, it's just a, it's a contract, the...
Yep, good, okay. So new business, SPCA dog bylaw agreement. Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, uh, this is a renewal of an existing contract. Uh, all that's happened is we've updated the contract. It is a two-year, uh, agreement that is being proposed. The SPCA has, uh, for a number of years now, uh, looked after our, um, dog bylaw enforcement, and so I'm recommending that we continue. I think they provided a, uh, a good level of service, uh, and, um, so I'm recommending that renewal.
Go ahead, deputy.
I'll, I'll make that a motion, your worship, I got a question afterwards about...
Second by councillor MacLeod, go ahead, deputy.
Uh, can you refresh my memory, Jeff, on, we, do we own the property in Brooklyn? How's that work?
Go ahead.
Uh, your worship, we, we do own the property in Brooklyn, and, uh, we do lease it to the SPCA. Uh, they pay us an annual amount, and if memory serves, I think I saw it in K. Moses' notebook last night.
The black book, huh? The black book?
I think it's five hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
And, um...
Do we pay taxes on that?
I think they pay the taxes.
Okay.
If I'm, I'm going from memory, but I can check.
So this is back in councillor Hood's days, can you just kinda refresh my memory how we ended up? No, I just wanna know, I'm just interested in knowing how we ended up with...
John, well, they, like, came out, they, on the word, uh, that was it.
Okay, and then they went out there and put up the SPCA.
The SPCA, some over, left the building and that.
They did all the renovations, all the other stuff? Okay, good, I was just wondering, that's all.
It's not in town, I need some lights, we're out of control.
They, 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 dogs, uh, answer, I don't know, and then SPCA could hold it, or I don't...
Okay, yep, I was just curious.
It's not in town.
No, it's not in town, no.
So why would you have to pay taxes?
But they used to do it, no, because we pay, we pay municipal taxes, right? So we owned a piece of...
Oh, that's right, 'cause we own it.
We own it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Right on. Okay. Go ahead councillor Hood.
So I'm gonna be supporting the motion to renew this. Um, you know, this, uh, bylaw frequently is criticized when people have difficulty managing dog issues and occasionally cat issues, so worked with, so I had some complaints and I worked with the people that were complaining. And I must say that although it was a little slow, it's not maybe done yet, they've done it, the, the response has been good, both from the town staff and the SPCA and the provincial SPCA, and there's been, the result has been that a dog that was causing difficulty in the neighborhood has been now registered as a fierce and dangerous dog in the town, and it's under very severe restrictions in terms of what the owner can do with it and not do with it. And it gives us now the tool, if that dog persists in violating the bylaw, uh, to remove it and have it taken out of there, so, um, it's not, we're, we're in a stage now where we're waiting to see what'll happen, if anything, next, but hopefully, uh, it's got the situation under control. It's part of the reason why I'm supporting the renewal of the bylaw.
Thank you. Okay, so call for the question?
My question.
Did you have some, you good?
Question.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, my apologies to council, the ATV pilot, um, he's actually putting that request on paper, there may be an opportunity for us to get in on, on that pilot, but he needs to submit it.
Is that, who's that?
He will do that, I don't, I have his name in my book.
Okay.
That's right.
Oh, he's present in the ATV association?
Yeah, he's present, I think he's presenting provincially next week, so I might have to get you together and...
Okay.
Okay, so reports, council advisory committees, committee of the whole, it's seven forty.
Thank you, thank you, your worship, I move that council accept the Yarmouth County Health Services Recruitment and Retention Committee revised terms of reference.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary?
Your worship, I move that council provide a letter of support to YASTA for the Nova Scotia Music Week bid and a commitment, uh, for up to ten thousand dollars.
Moved and seconded.
We should all, we should all second that.
Yeah, we should do a tap dance on that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
I think that's it, your worship, but I think councillor Hood mentioned that there's something under the water utility, but that's not, you got that?
Oh, that might be under...
There, there, uh, we did not, it was, it was contained in the minutes.
Okay.
Higher than that, but we do not need to ratify it as a council, because it was, it was done at water utility and it was in our minutes, so, we're good.
Good step, thank you councillor Hood. Okay, so we're good there. Citizen advisory committees, planning advisory, councillor MacLeod.
Your worship and fellow councillors, we've had a, a meeting recently, we don't, there's no motions or recommendations to council as a result of that meeting. But I want to say, and, uh, and certainly Wade can, uh, add to the discussion, we had a really good meeting, Wren presented to us, and it was a good presentation, mostly about the waterfront, but with, with other areas that they're working on. And, uh, then we did a, a, a public participation meeting, and we had three wonderful speakers from, uh, who have businesses on Water Street, talk to us about, uh, their concerns of our waterfront, and, uh, so as a result of those concerns, I've been in touch with them all, and, uh, and they're emailing me and/or our planning department, uh, to share their concerns, so from my point of view, as difficult and challenging as planning is, uh, to have this kind of discussion going on is, uh, truly wonderful. And Wade, if you have a comment, but, uh, I'm certainly comfortable with the process, although it's a heck of, too long a process sometimes, but have to dot all the i's and cross the t's and listen to people.
Go ahead councillor.
Uh, to, to kinda clarify what, uh, what councillor MacLeod is talking about, the main concern is brought up to us, of course, the, uh, the plan for, uh, the waterfront development included some aspects that would end up being residential, and the fear is, and, uh, it's, they used some, some events in Halifax kind of as an example, but the fear kind of is that, uh, you know, they would put some kind of residences there, and all of a sudden, the residents would start complaining about the noise and the smell, the industrial part of it. These, these were brought up by, you know, industries that work sometimes twenty-four hours a day, and that's certainly valid, and it's certainly worthwhile looking into, and that's why we sent it back.
And our, and our truck, and our truck route, uh, got some discussion, uh, after the fact, Wade, yeah, so...
It doesn't just happen there, it happens everywhere. You move into a place where there is noise, or there are no sidewalks, or there's no pla, and then the expectation, right? So have to manage that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so that's the issue.
So just as, uh, we're working, uh, with our planning department, and we'll continue to have that discussion with the, as we develop Water Street. Thank you, your worship.
Good, thank you councillor. Okay, so nothing to move there, reports for information, we're good. Questions for committee chairs? We've got two. I'll start with you there councillor.
Well, to be honest, mine isn't so much a request for committee chair as, as the CAO who just walked away, but perhaps, perhaps I can...
He's not far, he's not far.
Come back, come back. My, my request, or my question is about Water Street. We all know that Water Street's in pretty bad shape, and Phil and I, councillor Mooney and I have had a discussion about that actually, previous to this, and I know he has an explanation about, uh, exactly what's, what's going on on Water Street, and I think that the people of the town who have issued a lot of, a lot of concern about it, and Water Street's in pretty bad shape, that, uh, some of that is going to be worked on.
Yeah, and, uh, want me to start, Jeff, and you, if I'm, like I, like you say, if there's something wrong, you can correct me, or vice versa, I know that councillor MacLeod and deputy, or former deputy mayor Hood, former deputy mayor, former deputy mayor, both sit on the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, and there is a, uh, Dylan Consulting's undergoing a, uh, line removal down at that end of Water Street, so, uh, part of the project's gonna be the repaving of that cotton mill aspect of it. Um, we, the meeting was gonna be on the fifteenth, councillor Cleveland, but we're moving to the twenty-ninth, so we can get some more information, and, um, they didn't wanna do the famous thing of putting down new pavement and then coming, coming back and have to dig it up to take out the lines, so, um, they're getting their consultant's report, engineering report, to, to take care of the water problem, and then part of the project will be, uh, resurfacing of that end of Water Street, am I, not far off?
Close, uh, very close, very close. So I can just add to it, I guess, that, uh, this week I did talk to Greg Shea to find out exactly what the timeline is on that, and he's, he's anticipating getting it going. He's got the, uh, the design is completed by, by Dylan, there's another outstanding issue from the demolition that he's resolving before proceeding with that work, but, uh, he expected that to be resolved. So the challenge for us is that end and that particular area of Water Street is in pretty hard shape, and so while we won't go ahead and, and repave it, only to have it dug up again, we do have to do something, and so the next step is go into operations and say, what can we do economically to make it reasonable in the interim until that work takes place? So, uh, what will happen is that once they do their work, we will have our pavers go in and pave afterwards. Okay, so, um, the Industrial Commission is benefiting from our, through our paving program. We did delay it a year already, because we had planned to pave it last year, but knowing this was coming, it just doesn't make sense to pave and then tear it up.
And I, and I think we also had the discussion inside, Jeff, and your worship, and we talked about this briefly yesterday, is, um, I think, I don't know how we can, we all know the financial limitations and constraints that we're under, under municipal government with downloading and all the other things. I'd wanna know, Jeff, and if we can talk to Charles and kinda get our minds around it, to, I know we put a, a fair amount of money into paving and repaving and patching, but how to get, like, uh, from what I understand is paving on a, like a Porter Street, or a Albert Street, or Kemp Street, runs anywhere from seven hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand dollars a kilometer to pave a kilometer street, but if you did a Main Street, a Stairs Road, one of those streets is probably, if I wanna understand, in ex, in excess of a million dollars because of the, the bed you have to lay down and all the other things. So if you took the money that we bring in for a council, is, without all the, uh, monies we get from the federal and provincial governments, is about ten million dollars, and we have seventy kilometers of pavement in the town of Yarmouth, it doesn't take too much money after you pay for justice, community service and education. It'd take, if you put every set, not pay anybody in the town hall, not pay anybody to plow the streets, not put any money into leisure services, don't have, put any money back into the mariner center to pay for the deficit, all the other things that we do, no fire, no police, it would take twenty-five to thirty years to pave, pave the streets on the money that we bring in. So we are under significant financial constraint, is there anything, and I think, your worship, you told me over the last month or two, that's a problem, that you've been working with the town's task force and the town's caucus at the UNSM, or F, what is it now, FS?
NSFM.
NSFM, right? And they realize, when you sit down with towns like Oxford, and Amherst, and Truro, and Kentville, and Bridgewater, um, they all have the same problems as us. And they come down and say, your roads are actually pretty good compared to some of the stuff I've seen in Kentville.
And they are.
Some of the stuff I've seen in Wolfville, right? And, like, where do we have that conversation, Jeff, on, I know it's pretty hard to go and borrow three or four million dollars and only do three, three or four kilometers of road.
So can I, I'm gonna say this first.
'Cause we've all, and, and, and you hear it all the time, you hear, you hear more comments about the roads and the streets than you do anything else.
And anything else.
And if you explain it, how, how we're funded and what we do, and the difference between us as a town and what they pay the municipalities for roads, it's, it's quite a bit of difference.
So it's not just a little bit of difference, I think a couple things that folks don't understand, I sound like a broken record saying this, but you're right, we couldn't twenty or thirty years pave all our streets, we, we simply can't do it. When you, when you live in a town and you pay taxes in a town, your taxes are paying for a hundred percent of, a hundred percent of the streets, building, plowing, repaving, everything, sidewalks, everything, when you, when you step into the municipality for the roads, the, the province is paying. And, and by the way, we pay provincial tax too, so we're paying a share, all of ours and a share of theirs. I, I think too that maybe, um, it's not recognized that a town as a service center, more the service center for the entire region, our population at least triples every single weekday. So we don't have sixty-five hundred people, we have over twenty thousand, and every single one of those cars is, uh, 'cause you can't get to town unless you're in a vehicle, and, and they are on our roads, and that's what we want, because we are the service center and it's what we do, but it wears everything out four hundred percent faster, and we are still, and, and the other piece is, um, you know, if it were really, really cold here, or just not cold at all, it would be different, but, but when the weather does this, every time that the frost comes up, it just heaves everything, so we are, yeah, we're, we're in a state, but we are not by far, um, the, the worst going. So, so from my perspective, that whole town's task force piece, and it's in the priorities for Nova Scotia municipalities, we just need to do something to even that playing field, and, uh, and I thi, I, I'm hoping to get some movement on that. CAO, did you have a, an answer for him, sort of, or, go ahead?
Uh, there's, there's not much I can add to that, except what her worship has said is that we are, you know, we're a hundred percent responsible for our roads, what's beneath them, and, and the surface, and so we, we do, uh, from our own tax base, draw a significant amount of money each year for capital, but we have more than just roads to, to invest in. We do get gas tax, and, and this past fiscal year, it was twice as much as, as normal. It would be great to see that, um, I guess, uh, let's say, put in place as a, as a continuing increase in the gas tax. The one issue around the gas tax is that the gas tax gets dispersed in this province, not on the basis of, of your infrastructure burden, but on the basis of a formula that doesn't include your infrastructure burden, so, uh, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily go to where the infrastructure issue is, so it might be something for NSFM to, to think about, uh, in conjunction with FCM, to, to lobby for the continuation of the, of the increase in the gas tax, and to work at home around the allocation of that, of that second tier of gas tax in a different way than the, than the standard allocation.
The other piece to that, don't, don't forget that, I think our gas tax is six hundred thousand, six, six fifty, whatever, um, and they doubled that, they gave us that chunk again just this year, but the Cliff Street project was four million dollars, because our infrastructure underneath is so old, it's not just the, it, it, all those pipes that are so old have to be dug up, you can't, it, so, so what should cost a half million dollars, costs four million, it's crazy, and, and the town is, uh, the town's paying that. Deputy?
How did it work, and I think councillor Hood was around the table, and the CAO, I don't know if you were here then, but when they built the Justice Center, like we, that's a separate, it, that's separate than Grant, is that separate than Grant and Lew, the Justice Center in South End, or Yarmouth South? Courthouse, yeah.
Go ahead.
So, so the courthouse, uh, we, we were very fortunate, um, uh, back in the day when, you know, prior to the construction of our courthouse, our brand-new twenty-million-dollar courthouse, prior to that, courthouses were not included in the provincial properties that were subject to a grant in lieu, but there was a change made, and over a three-year period, it was, it was phased in, the courthouses are now subject to a grant in lieu, so we get a significant, uh, grant in lieu of taxes for that, for that courthouse.
Good.
And is that an advantage, Jeff, that a town has over a municipality? Because, like, aren't those provincial courthouses all in ta, are they all in towns?
I, I don't know where they all are, I, I know that, that ours is in town, and I know Port Hoxbury's is in town, uh, I...
I don't know where they all are.
Yuck.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've been, I've been in every one of them.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, you're on.
They're all in towns.
Okay.
They're all in towns?
No, uh, no.
But both Kate Breck...
Is Arishat a town?
No.
They're not all in towns, but the, the major ones are in town, the majority of them by far are in town.
Okay. It's just, it's a question, the que... And I think councillor Cleveland brought it up, and you hear it mostly, is, is we did really well with the, uh, Pleasance Street, Pleasance Street project. We got that, that whole thing paved, we did really well with the Cliff Street project. Um, the one that's gonna be, happen here with Glebe Street and Parade Street, that's gonna be, uh, monies that's gonna be spent taking care of not only the pipes, but also the roads, so, um, hopefully with that gas tax, is that something that we can continue over the next couple of years? Hopefully that's, uh, putting money in the hands of municipalities that really need it.
I'll beg of that, will that happen?
Good, that's gonna be good. I hope you do, your worship. But it's something to keep on the radar, maybe have a more of a discussion that, Jeff, at the committee of the whole, or the, we have the engineer here and, uh, talk about the budget again.
It's a lot of money to do that every year, I mean, yeah, it, it, twenty-five million to Halifax alone, right? Never mind everything else.
But the seven thousand dollars, that's a twenty-five million dollars for Halifax. You know?
Exactly. It's all good though, it's all relative. So are we good?
I'm good.
Did I need him, okay, so that was the questions? Okay, additions?
The only other thing, your worship, maybe is, was... Questions to chairs is, um, I had a chance to talk to Ryan Graves today. He's in Calgary, he won't be dressing tonight, but he'd like to, uh, send out a message to everybody in Yarmouth, in Yarmouth County, thanking him for the support that he's gotten over the last several months, he said he'll be watching from the stands, he's actively involved in practice and participating with the team and all the meetings, and, um, he feels that every time he, he puts on the jersey, he feels Yarmouth's behind him a thousand percent, so we had a really good conversation. The other thing, your worship, is I had an opportunity, uh, on Tuesday night, I was in London, England, I saw Come From Away, which is the play about, uh, Gander Newfoundland and nine-one-one, and, and Come From Away, I think it sold out, it was sold out for the first two months, I think it sold out for the next seven. It won four Olivier Awards, it was the equivalent of a Tony, and they actually mentioned in that play, the Yarmouth to Bar Harbor Ferry.
Of course they do.
They do.
That's how important it is.
That's right, and they do, and we had supper, we met somebody on the bus going back to the hotel the night before, she's from the Canary Islands, she's a vice president of a university, her daughter goes to school in London, she, she works at a summer camp in, um, Maine, and I told her we were from Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, she said, my daughter's taking the boat with her thirteen students coming to Yarmouth and going to PEI. So how's that? I'd say come there and see the mayor.
And I hope they do, they will, they will. Yeah, exactly, God love you, my goodness. Okay, so additions, thirteen A, um, I, I might need some help with this, CAO, but, um, I would just like us to write a letter to the municipality of, of Yarmouth with regard to the, um, to the business that was just put up on the lake, 'cause I have environmental concerns, and actually, people are coming to me, it's, I know I'm the mayor of the town, but people have come to me with concerns, uh, on that, and I think I'm just looking for assurances that, um, everything is okay, the environment is protected, that's a lake, um, we have a twenty-five million dollar water facility, that if, if anything leaked into that lake, our system has to clean that up, um, there's homes on that lake, there's a, it's, um, so I'm just looking for someone to make that motion for me, just to send the letter to ask for assurances that the environmental considerations have been looked at. CAO?
So your worship, I'm, I'm not sure who your intention was to send the letter to, but in the case, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's Department of Environment, that's their mandate?
Yeah, I can't settle, I can't settle with it.
Councillor, you wanna make a question, councillor?
Yeah, for sure.
Your worship, I would like to make that motion, that you write that letter. Um, every time I drive by there, I just kinda cringe, and it's nothing against, we love business.
Yeah, we do.
But there are environmental issues there that... But there are environmental issues there that just terrify me. And I don't want to run into any kind of issues there, so, yes.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
Okay. If I could second it? Moved and seconded? Any more discussion? It's going to Environment, by the way.
Yeah.
And copied. Yes. Yeah. Okay. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. I put video regarding cleanup. So, councillor Cleveland, I believe you were talking with our communications guy, Mike's here actually, the C N A. And Mike, you're just looking for some names that would be willing to do a, sit in on a video? Yeah, okay.
Your worship, we're looking less for names who would be willing to sit in, as opposed to people who would be more willing to help us with the cleanup. What we're talking about here is Adopt a Block. And we're setting up, we're trying to set up a complete ripoff of our Gau series of videos, and I'll admit that freely.
They're great, though.
But they're very effective.
Our Gau's excellent.
And we're going to be doing something somewhat different than that, but we hope to create a series of videos on a regular basis. I don't know if we can do it every week or not, but we'll do our very best to, on different issues. And the first one we decided was Adopt a Block. We have issues with litter, lots of them. And the month of April has been named for Adopt a Block for this year, and we're going to be doing another one in September as well, as you know, that was just approved by council. And so, we had an interview with Amy, Amy Hilliard, from Waste Check, that we did yesterday. I thought it went pretty well, actually. And what we're hoping for is that a group of, not just councillors, but employees, anybody who'd be interested to, employees, CAOs, whatever, who'd be willing to just get together for a short period of time and adopt a certain area, maybe it's this block here, and just go around and clean it up. We'll film it, but mostly it's about doing the cleanup, because if you're going to talk the talk, you should walk the walk.
Good. Okay. Councillor MacLeod? We're always in trouble.
I want to thank and commend Tim McKinnon for the huge amount of effort that he's put in. And just, not to say that I pick it up, but every day I pick up litter, and today I picked up a half a bag full, mostly on Albert and Pleasant Street on my noon hour walk. And I leave it in front of Town Hall, so.
Thank you. Okay, so if I, did you make the motion? Oh, no, it doesn't have to be a motion, we just need some names. So, who's good? I'm good. Okay, so, Mike? Mike will coordinate, send us out an email, and good to go. Thanks, folks. RFD Airport. CAO?
Your worship, the airport corporation met recently, and the topic of negotiating for sale of all or a portion of the Yarmouth International Airport lands was raised, and it was recommended to the three owners to permit the airport corporation to engage or to enter into negotiations for all or part of the airport lands to arrive at terms and conditions satisfying to the owners. And further, that the airport board engage the expertise to support and carry out the negotiations. So, this recommendation comes from the airport corporation. I've included a couple pages of thoughts to go along with that. Some of these came from my colleague in Argyle, did a lot of work in preparing a request for decision for his council. I took that, I, let's see, I plagiarized, I had his permission, and added some of my own thoughts as it relates to the town. So, that is for your consideration.
Okay.
I'll move. Second recommendation from the CAO, your worship.
Okay, moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Cleveland, and councillor Hood, it looks like he's going to say something.
Doing? What are we doing? Is anyone on?
Yeah.
Pass this motion, what are we doing?
So, the airport corporation doesn't have the authority to sell land without the permission-
I'm not asking that, I'm asking, what does this motion do, besides nothing, other than put us on notice that this may take place? Does it request anything? Is it, are we taking a decision tonight that's final and binding on us?
No.
In terms of our position?
I don't feel like we are.
Well, I'm simply asking, what are we doing?
It says to enter into negotiations, and with terms and conditions that are satisfying to the owners. So, we would have, I assume we would have to agree, that's the way I'm reading it. That's, you're the lawyer, so you agree with that?
The real question, no, it's not lawyer stuffs. The real question is, there's an important question that has to be decided by the owners. And the question is, do we do it now, before there's a negotiation? Or do we do it, try to do it later after there's, after maybe something materializes? Because there's nothing definite at this moment, other than we've identified that we have, we may have surplus land, and the surplus land may have value. And we could sell it under the right circumstances, that's where we're at. There has been interest in the land. And there has been an ad hoc committee of two, and I'm one of the suckers, that's on that committee to deal with a buyer. But I, I don't want to go and get out ahead of council, I have to come back to council and find out that I did something that's beyond this council's wishes on the thing. So, this is a delicate thing that we're going to go into here. And the motion is, see, I read this as being information from the CAO that we need to think about before we take an actual decision. That's what I think we're doing. Am I right or wrong here?
It's a, no, councillor is right, this is a very delicate situation. You want to negotiate in good faith, and make sure that everybody understands, you know, the situation in which a municipal body can sell land. And this is complicated by the fact that we have three municipal owners of this land who each have a different level of interest and different issues related to the lands in question. So, we're talking about lands that are on the west end of runway fifteen thirty-three. So, that extends into the town. The lands that would be surplus if that were closed would be about sixty percent or so in the town, and maybe thirty to forty percent in the municipality. And so, I've outlined in the CAO comments some of the issues that I think you need to think about as it relates to the disposal and the ultimate development of that land. There are expectations that have been expressed at our recent meeting at the Burge about taxation sharing. This council has not been approached, we've not negotiated, there is no agreement around taxation sharing. But yet, there is an expectation that has been expressed at the other, by the other two councils, that if there were development on lands within the town as a result of the disposal of these lands, that the taxation from that development would be shared with them. And that's not something that we've decided, and I think based on the conversation, based on the comments at the Burge, that issue alone could be pivotable, pivotal in terms of the involvement of one or both of those municipalities in this endeavor, and maybe in the airport in general. But this is a very different line of, or focus for the airport. I mean, the airport corporation has been in the business of operating the airport for a dozen years. They have sold one piece of land in the past, since we've had control of it, they sold a piece to Midland. But its focus has been airport operation and potentially aerospace development. Selling off a large portion of land for general development is a completely different thing. And so, that's why we talked about it as three owners at the Burge meeting, and we agreed that, you know, we can't afford to maintain that much infrastructure going forward in the direction it was going. And CAO Muse, as acting manager for the airport, has done a very good job at cost control and cost reduction at the airport, and still we are at a annual operating subsidy of six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. A hundred and ten of so or so comes back to the municipalities, because we pay the taxes, but we give it back to ourselves. So, it's, you know, there's some important questions there for the town, perhaps more so than the others. And the difficult spot that councillor Hood is in is sitting as one of the two committee members to negotiate this, is if we are on our side of the table, are not all on the same page, or all of the same expectation, how on earth do we expect to have a successful negotiation with a third party, where all of us as owners are satisfied? So, we go, councillor Hood and CAO Muse go to the table negotiating in good faith, only to have the best deal that they might be able to negotiate, potentially in jeopardy on our side of the table, because we aren't necessarily on the same page. So, that's an important thing, and it puts councillor Hood in a difficult situation. You know, the, if we were to share the taxes as were proposed by our partners, effectively what would happen is if you had a development occur out there that resulted in a hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue, the town would receive or have the benefit of controlling thirty thousand of that. And our municipal neighbors would have seventy thousand of that. It would all go into the airport, but in their name, not in our name, we're sharing the taxes. So, the issue, what it creates is a situation where this council sets the tax rate, levies the tax, collects the tax, and it gets spent by the other councils. And I'm not sure if that disassociation of tax collection and tax spending is necessarily a good thing. Now, you can correct that, and Jim's favorite, sorry, councillor MacLeod's common refrain is, you know, if we're one municipality, then it is one pot. And that's really the issue here, is that we have this municipal line that goes right through the airport, and we trip over it whenever we get into these broader regional discussions.
Hang on, I got a couple of you.
Just, one more, one more comment on that, is that, you know, there's likely if we don't agree to this expectation, to the degree that it has been presented, you know, I suggest to you that there will be some, there will be some comment back on that. You know, I watched as Argyle council dealt with the same issue Tuesday night, and it was one of the only questions that rose, that arose from the presentation, is what about the tax sharing? And, you know, CAO Muse was upfront, and he said there is no agreement in place for that. You know, if that doesn't come to pass, they may not be happy, but at the end of the day, you know, you have, your responsibility is to your taxpayers, your constituents, and we won't always agree on everything. And it's okay. And if they make decisions based on maybe their expectations not being met, you know, that is their prerogative. And we'll deal with it. The other thing that I talk about in here a little bit is, and it is, again, a, one of the unfortunate things with having separate municipalities. We know that urban development tends to like greenfield more than brownfield or redevelopment sites. And so, we've seen downtown move from the south end of town a hundred years ago to this part of town. We've seen the commercial activity move to Stars Road. And the fear is, or the concern is, is that if you create a brand-new batch of greenfield property on Stars Road, is that Stars Road will migrate east. Now, the unfortunate thing about being two municipalities is we can do land use controls, we can do land use controls and introduce some restrictive controls that don't allow certain types of development on those lands within the town, but partway down that stretch, it becomes the municipality. And they're actually incentivized to encourage, right, the migration of Stars Road east, so that the tax base falls just beyond the municipal line. And again, because we're separate municipalities, and that's not uncommon, a lot of towns across the province face that very situation. Most of Truro's commercial development, as you come off the highway on both exits, is outside of the town, right? Where the services are available, where the population base is there to support the business, but the taxation is paid in the county. So, sprawl is actually incentivized by these municipal lines. And it is not in our collective interest to have sprawl or dilution of that business core. So, what, I'm not sure it will result, you know, making greenfield site available result in new business. One of the things that is my biggest concern for our future is population. Our population has been leaking three to five percent every census. It is difficult to believe that we would continue or have leaked population for the last twenty years, that the market is shrinking, that we would actually see incremental business, that we would see new business arrive that isn't either replacement or business migrating just because land is available. So, the idea of the sharing of taxes is a difficult one. The fear or the concern about the movement of, or the dilution of that commercial core is a concern. And it can't be fully dealt with through your land use controls, because you only control out to the line. And your neighbor is incentivized to work against your interest. So, there are concerns. At the same time, you've got a party that's very interested in the land. And I think it's important to hear them out, but I'm just telling you, these are some of the interests that the town might have, that might be different than what your neighbors have. And if councillor Hood's to sit at the table and negotiate on behalf of all three, that's an awfully difficult place to be.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I'm not representing the town, I'm representing the council corporation. But I'm appointed to the corporation as a town, as a volunteer.
Okay.
Dragging this by, to move, I was asked to accept this.
Yeah, I got to get these guys first. Yeah, hang. Can you hang on one second? Oh, okay. You're good?
I understand better, Jeff, having read this yesterday, and again, earlier today, I have the same concerns, and I don't know how you, by us approving a procedure tonight, what does, what does that, as I think Cliff was attempting to ask earlier, what does that commit us to? Is it just commit us to a negotiation, and you bring back to us a draft of a possible agreement? I look at the, I look at the land, you know, sixty percentage of that prime real estate land, in, within the town boundaries of our town. We're this big, the county is this big, and they're going to get a portion of the land, which would, as you say, change the way we do planning, I think, in our town. And I have grave concerns over that, because we as a council are struggling to maintain and improve Main Street, and I think we've done a credible job over the past eight or ten years. It takes a long time to get this far. And I think, and I just have to be careful and thoughtful, and some, not be involved intimately in the discussion, because as a volunteer, I'm not, but I, gee whiz, I have grave concerns about the possible changes that could have an impact throughout our town. And your comment about we'd have less of a challenge if we were one municipal unit, I'm always going to throw that in, your worship and fellow councillors. Thank you very much.
And it's a fact. Go ahead, councillor Hood.
The issue is whether we have any chance to retain, to continue to have an airport. The issue is whether we have any chance to retain, to continue to have an airport. There are those inside of that. There may be a chance to find sufficient funds to enable us to continue to operate the airport with the major runway and the other infrastructure that we have. If we don't sell the land and generate some money, I don't think there will be an airport open here in fairly short order. I believe Argyle will pull out, and I believe the town will pull out. And so, the question for me is, is it worthwhile pursuing a real opportunity to do a deal with a corporate entity that has own source revenues of $40 million, which exceeds the combined revenues of Yarmouth, Yarmouth municipality and Argyle? And not screw it up like we did, or they did, three years ago, the relationship part? So, the building a relationship with that, with an entity that needs more land for housing is an important step on our part. And if it costs some money from the taxation, which would result in the continued operation of the airport with either a reduced amount we have to pay every year, or maybe even none, if enough was paid, if you've got enough for your land, by selling it, you would be able maybe to generate a fund which would generate enough income to cover your operating expenses. 5% of 10 million bucks would give you $500,000 a year. So, for me, it's more than just the tax sharing. It's a fair deal for all of us, but it's the added thing of maintaining an airport rather than losing it. And it's a long shot. It's not, this is not, but it's our last best chance. It's a hail mary, but I've seen him work a couple of times like Doug Flutie did, okay? And I'm a Doug Flutie, little short ass, pissing into the wind half my life, and I'm going to take a try at it, if you'll let me.
Yeah, Counselor Hood and Alair are in an unenviable position, your worship, because they could go out and negotiate a deal, or they come up with a good deal that's palatable to all three municipal units, and come back and not one of us agree with it, right? And the other thing is, with the taxation component of the agreement, is, I'm just wondering if, did we already let that one, that horse get out of the barn with the piece of property that was sold, and those guys get to keep that part of municipal taxation? Because should have that been one of the first things, is that taxation goes back to the airport, or proportionately? Is, so, they already did the midland deal, and then municipality gets that money, right? The money for the sale of the property went into the airport corporation, but the other guys get the benefit of the taxation. So, that's the problem I have, was the taxation, taxation part of it. It's like Jim said, here we are, we sent a letter to the Minister of Environment talking about a problem, or perceived problem, that we could have in Dayton with some environmental issues, is, once they go outside that line in the town of Yarmouth, we could, you could almost have the same problem again. Right? And that, like you said, we want to infill, not expand the field, like Jeff said, with less population. So, these guys might go, do the best deal that they think they can do, and come back. It might not be good for any one of the parties. And like you said, it's taken us two or three years to get back to the table, to rebuild those relationships. Jeff, you said it at one point today, is you have to manage expectations, right? And I think Counselor Hood is right about where he's coming from. What does this mandate, what does this give him and the CAO, or the Acting General Manager of the Airport Corporation, leeway to do? Like, is there going to be coming back to council and saying, this is where we're at? Is that going to be part of the process? I think it would be, wouldn't it?
I'm gonna let you go ahead.
Yeah, so, that's a great question, because the process has not been defined. Counselor Hood may have some comment on that. But while I have the microphone for a second, I will, I will agree with Counselor Hood that there are a couple of things that he said that I think are absolutely right on the mark, is that you may have an opportunity like maybe you won't see again. If you're looking to sell land, there may be an opportunity right now. And the land maybe has value in the millions. And so, that could create a very nice fund for the airport to support, subsidize the municipal contributions into the airport for a very long time, depending on how much you take out every year. And that the party, the third party, is somebody who, you know, I think it is beneficial to be able to make a deal with. I think there would be long-term benefits to all of us.
And as Counselor Hood said, the last best chance.
Right. And so, from the airport perspective, you know, I'm giving you some feedback from caution, some concerns from the town perspective, and advising you of an expectation from our partner municipal units that you're going to have to deal with, outside of that negotiation. But it is part of the expectation as a result of that. So, no, I agree. Hail Mary, and there are definite upsides to the airport.
The, and I agree with Counselor Hood, is I like the aspect, I'm not too crazy about the taxation aspect, coming from sitting here as a town council. I'm not, I'm not too excited about that. But the opportunity to say that we put the money for the sale in a fund, and then we draw it down from it, or we use the interest from it, and do it that way, because that property out there does have value commercially, and it also has value. Yeah. And it also has a psychological value, is we have access to an airport, access to a runway, right? And there's, that's a psychological value, too, to a community, that we still can access some air service. So, he's going to have an interesting job over the next several weeks or the next couple of months to do, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity. If we want to save any portion of that airport, this is what we have to do. And Counselor Hood, when Doug Flutie threw that ball for Boston College, my mother and father were in Florida, and my mother dropped the phone screaming, because she was a Doug Flutie fan, too. And I was talking on the phone with my mother, because she said, the football game's over, it looks like they're going to lose. And the next thing I heard was, the phone hit the floor, and my mother screaming. So, I remember watching that game, talking to my mother at the same time.
Good stuff. Counselor Berry?
I think I have faith in Counselor Hood, that he's going to do the best, coming up with the terms and conditions. The sad thing about this is, when you go into a partnership with three different people, we can't always agree on where things are done, or the terms itself. I believe you need to go through the process regardless, because it's our last hope, listening to what's around the table today. And I, and the question that comes coming up is whether the money from the owners would be put into a fund and saved, or whether they would pull out and use for other things around their area or our area, and how much that would be. But it talks about ownership and partnership, and there's what's always so difficult, when we've seen, you know, one partner thinking of this as a major gold, and we thinking of this as a major gold, and our other partner think of another major gold, and none of it comes together like a smooth glove. So, I think there's our biggest headache. And the task that, the task that, all this has to be put together in terms and conditions that satisfy all three parties. So, I think there's where we really have to think about. I think that going out and doing it is a no-brainer. It's something that needs to be done, and we need to get it done. It's the fact of pleasing everybody and coming up with the right terms and conditions that are going to satisfy everybody.
So, so does that, does that mean that we just send you in, or do we send you in knowing where we are? Like, if we're not okay with the taxation piece, do we say that? Okay, go ahead.
So, you're not sending me in?
Yeah, yes.
To this, the corporation?
Yes, the corporation is, absolutely.
It's a municipal corporation, by the way, standalone, but the owners of the corporation are the three municipal units. Here's how I see it. I see it as, so, Alan and I had a preliminary meeting, two hours and something, Monday, I think, or Tuesday this week, to try to get our heads together on how to approach this. We see it as a, there's an opening phase to this, and that is, that phase is simply to assess and determine on a respectful basis with the proponent, very respectful, what their intention and needs are, and what their expectations of us are. I think that's the first stage. And we need to make an assessment on behalf of the corporation, the three units, on how likely we can perform and meet the expectations of the potential buyer. Okay?
Okay.
That's, so, I just, I was a little concerned when I read this, that if we adopt some kind of formal motion now, that it may tie our hands later on in a way that might not be helpful. Maybe if this were, this is important information for the CAO to share with us, because his concerns on this have been expressed to me. I've met with Jeff about this, and I wouldn't want one of our partners or the prospective buyer to think that this is somehow an indication that this is never going to happen, because the town won't agree, or whatever. There, that's what I'm concerned about.
You've all expressed it well.
So, a couple of things, just to Counselor Berry's comment. I believe it is understood consensus that if land were sold, and much like the midland situation, that the proceeds from the sale would stay with the airport, right? And it would be up to the airport board to determine how to use that, either as a fund for operations, or as a fund for capital, or a combination of it. I don't think it's the intention, I think it's the consensus, that the money would not come out, get used for other municipal purposes. So, the airport, and I'll, I'll say this, and then I'll look for Counselor Hood's response, is that the Airport Corporation doesn't have the authority to sell land without the owners saying you do. So, are you comfortable to go ahead and negotiate without an endorsement from the town and the other municipalities to say, yes, we support you entering in that negotiation?
I'm content to go ahead with what I understand the corporation asked me, asked us to do, which is what I just expressed, to assess the level of interest, the capability, and the expectations of the potential buyer. I would say the next step is, this is how Alan and I saw it, we would be going back to the owners and sorting out what we could do to move to the next more detailed phase with a memorandum of understanding. That's how I see it unfolding. It's not going to happen in two weeks, could happen in three or four weeks. One of the principles is a way of vacation that we would be dealing with.
So, when you say to try to figure out the expectations of the buyer, I feel much better. I feel less like you are there without knowing exactly what we are, all three councils are exactly okay with. That's my concern. I don't want you to go in not, you know, but I know you know why you're going in.
I have faith in being able to get something done that's good enough, that we'll find a way. If it's a good enough deal, we'll find a way with the other, with our partners out there, in Modi and Argyle. I've seen tougher problems. Believe me.
Yeah, so have I.
I've lived with one all day, so. I'm not talking about anyone at my house, I'm talking about my law.
And just to be clear, we didn't spend the day together, so I'm safe.
Actually, I'll share this with you. Joan has received some pretty good news on the medical field, and the final straw of that was this morning, so.
Okay, that's good.
That's a good thing, but no. But I've been dealing with a hot potato in the office, I can tell you that. We're getting there.
So, you feel comfortable?
I feel comfortable, I mean, frankly, I'd like to see this thing tabled, and just, it's for information, and it's out there, it's in the public, but not as something that's going to tie us up in knots.
Are they looking for us to, are they, is the corporation looking for us to all agree? So, my question is, did the Airport Corporation expect all three councils to agree to this before you did your thing?
To this?
To this.
No.
This recommendation.
We didn't cross that, that threshold was not crossed, but certainly, the corporation understands that we can never consummate a deal without the agreement of all three councils.
Yeah, I'll withdraw the motion and make a motion table with provision from the second.
I would feel much better if you did that, I would.
Okay, whatever you need.
Thank you.
Who was the second?
Okay, who was the second?
My only question with this, and I'm fine with it as far as it goes, but I do have this question. Argyle did approve a motion. Is not approving a motion a problem? You don't believe it is?
Go ahead, CAO.
The reason I seconded it at all, is I still have my reservations, which everybody was fine to point out, you know, they reflect with how I feel as well, let me speak, is that, you know, I just want to make sure that we're all on an even keel here. That's all.
So, your worship, Argyle did approve that motion, and they approved $7,000 towards some of the professional assistance. But, your worship, Counselor Hood is talking about engaging in a very preliminary, you know, trying to figure out expectations and the basis for this, for this negotiation. I, you know, that's not committing to anything, it's seeing if there might be a possibility, and doing some preliminary investigation, and coming back. I don't see the necessity, if everybody here is comfortable with engaging in this, of formally passing a motion that only reflects that. If you prefer that not be done, I don't think it needs to be. Everybody here understands, and we're in public, that you'll be undertaking that, you've been asked by the corporation, and, you know, it's transparent.
All right. Then I will take back my second and go from there.
Okay, so, there's a motion to table.
Motion to table, your worship.
Now, a seconder? Second by Counselor McLeod, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary. Motion carried.
We still worked the discussion, though, your worship.
Oh, absolutely. Excellent discussion. Thank you. Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, there, it may be premature, I'll hold my comments till the next meeting. It was around, so, on the basis of how Counselor Hood explained they're going to approach this, I think it might be premature to start spending money on the additional expertise and technical expertise that may be required as they get into the negotiation. I think it's premature, not necessary today, to approve a budget for that. So, I'll just hold that till.
Boy, I'm talking about the debate discussion today, but it has to be done in a respectful and meaningful way, given the importance and understanding that a court will have to see the next steps.
And if you need something from us?
Call.
No problem. No problem. Right, we set something up. Okay, so we're good on that one, folks?
Do we vote?
Yep, we did. We tabled it. You don't vote on a table? Well, we voted on it anyway. Okay. Last one, grants to organizations. C A O?
So, Your Worship, we undertook the same processes last year as was council's direction, and so we had applications come in for our, excuse me, for our grant funding program. The counselors, each of you filled out a spreadsheet and allocated the funds among the various applications. So, what you have are, in the, in the leftmost columns, you have the requests and the grants from 2018, and then in the rightmost columns, you have the request and the grant for 2019, or for this year. And so, these are the, the requests and the averages of your six allocations for each of the organizations. Typically, what we do is we round these to the nearest $10 so that we're not, you know, so the numbers don't look quite as random as they do. There's also on page two, the, the tax grants, so the request for taxation assistance and the averages of the amounts that were allocated by the counselors. And so, this is the first time you've seen this. You don't need to feel compelled to, to make a motion tonight. This is for information. If you wish to make a motion to, to do it, you may. Otherwise, we can bring it to the next council meeting.
Go ahead, deputy.
I got a question, a couple of questions, Jeff. We give, we allocate $70,000 a year? Right? And how many, how much money, just so the public will know, how much money was in the request amount from the organizations that wanted support from the town?
I got 163. This should be, sorry. Go ahead, sorry.
Yes, so for the operating grants, grants, there were requests for $163,038. And on the, the tax grants, there are another request for an additional $315,294. So, total, $478,000.
With $478,000, and we do about $385,000, right?
$275 is the budget.
Right, $275 plus 70, so.
Yeah, okay, $345. I got another question. In, uh, tax grants, Milton Improvement Society, do we, we own that? That's, is that for, that's not for the Doug Malonsen Park, that's for a different piece of property, right?
That's right. Milton Improvement Society owns a piece of land that is part of Sealed Landers Park.
Okay. Okay, and the other question was, the Rotary Park is the only one, except for the Milton Improvement Society, they got 100% of their tax ask this year, is $6,587. Can you give me an explanation on that one, please?
Um, in terms of, what would you like explained?
What's, what was the deal with the Rotary Club and expectations with the park, and do we own that property?
Uh, we do own the property.
So, then why, and we have control of that property, right?
Well, we own it.
Yeah.
They have control of it through an agreement with the town.
What, what's the agreement?
Uh, I can get you a copy of the agreement if you like, but it's for the purpose of them developing a park. And if you're asking specifically about the taxes, I assume since we're on that, then.
Yeah.
Okay, so the agreement has, and I don't think it was amended, I think the agreement was struck back, I'm going to say 20 years ago. Uh, the agreement provided that they would pay the taxes. And at some point along the way, they began asking for grants to pay the taxes.
Can, when you, can, I'll make a motion that staff provide for the last six years the amount of money that's been spent by the Rotary Club on the park, if you can get that information, just for, like, if we're paying $6,500 and they say they're going to do continued improvements to the park, and they haven't done anything for six years, or eight years, or 10 years, then why don't we just take over the park and do it ourselves?
So, do I have a question? Let me, let me ask this question.
Yeah.
That number was already filled in on my sheet.
Yeah, now, how does that work?
Assuming that, so I assumed that we had a deal where we are paying 100% of the taxes.
I'd have to look back on that.
Can you look? It was already filled, yeah, so what, so I think everybody at the table assumed this, this wouldn't be 100% if that number hadn't been filled in. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, it, so I assume, and the same as.
The Milton Improvement Society.
Exactly. They're, they were literally filled in on the sheet. Yeah.
Well, we'll, y'all.
Yeah, that's how it came.
I, I don't know if anybody's seconding the motion, but I would.
So, so the difference, so the difference, so the difference with the Rotary Park from, say, Doug Malonsen Park is that the town entered an agreement.
And then they gave such to the organization?
Uh, well, it's part of the agreement that they were to pay the taxes, right? And so, they applied for a grant to pay the taxes. The, the Milton Improvement Society Park is part of a park that the town has maintained for a number of years now, but it actually, the land, that strip of land, that narrow strip of land, a portion of it actually belongs to that society. So, they are in fact allowing us to use their land as a park, and that's, that's the price of, of that.
But didn't we a few, several years ago, the last four or five, or three or four years ago, with the Rotary Park, is we had a suggestion that we want, we might want to do something else with it, and they came back from the Rotary Club and said, we're the ones that control the park and are going to decide what goes on in the park?
Yeah, I, my memory on that isn't clear. I know we did have a conversation about the taxation.
It'd be just interesting to see what the, what the agreement says, that's all. Because I think that's, that's like Counselor Hood just kind of alluded to a minute ago, that's maybe something that could be.
It may be a higher, better use.
It could be a higher and better use, and I just don't understand that, how they get 100%, and we are.
I think this is a, this is a mistake.
And, and, and you can see, I don't think there's anybody else that they got 100% of their taxes for the year.
Your Worship, let me, I know this came up a number of years ago, since the original agreement, and I'm going to say eight, 10 years ago, and let me see if there was a different decision of council and bring that back to you.
You don't need a motion for that, Jeff? You can just do that?
Nope, I can bring it back to you.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I just want to know if that was an accident, that was, it was just put in there, so we assumed we were giving them 100%.
Okay.
Right? I would like to know that because then we can, we can redo that number on our sheets, and the other way.
Good.
Good. Counselor McLeod?
Your Worship, I have two, two questions on the tax grants. We were given a budget of $275,000, so therefore, we couldn't give everybody a 100%. I was going to work out mine so that we just give them a budget of 250, and then I was going, I wrote a little note on my report indicating that we should ask our sister municipalities to pay the difference so they would have that 100%. That, that to me, because we serve not only the town of Yarmouth, but the, our three sister municipalities, or two other sister municipalities. And the other question relates to the library. I didn't know until after I sent my app, my results in, or my, my suggestions, that maybe we have to give the library 100%. And, and I wanted to find out about that, or not necessarily tonight, Jeff, but sometime.
Go ahead, C A O.
So, unbeknownst to, to me, there is an act of the legislature that actually exempts the library. It's separate from the, it's not a private members bill, it's not in the, the Assessment Act or anything like that, where there are some exemptions listed. It is in a separate act, which I received a copy of, and sure enough, they are exempt under a, I can't remember the name of the act, but it's.
1960?
Yeah, yeah, maybe earlier than that. I'm thinking 1920 or 30. But anyway, I have, I have a copy of it, and in fact, they are exempt, so we don't have to do that by grant, and I'm sorry I didn't pick up on that. Uh, so they would be 100% exempt, and it has nothing to do with us. But we do have to communicate with P V S C because it doesn't come through as exempt property, right? And it should, under separate legislation.
The question, can I, can I ask my fellow counselors my thought on sharing some of the costs with the, with our two sister municipalities? Because if we're not funding 100% of their taxes, then I, we serve them countywide. Let's, let's, there's an area that they could help us with, or should help us with.
I think that would be.
That's up to the organization.
Yeah, I think that's the 100%, right, Your Worship? I think that's up to the organization to go in and say, the town of Yarmouth has, has done the, I'll just use the Scotsman, Scotia Sportsman's Association is, the taxes are $3,154, and town of Yarmouth granted $800, so if you want to help us with most of the shooters, most of the participants, most of the members are from the municipality of Yarmouth and Argyle, then maybe they go in, and I don't know if they make the same, same request to the municipality, but that is another avenue for funding for, for some of these organizations. I think we had that discussion with, I think it's just a little before my time, with the Kay Nickerson Center, is they built a new building, but then they didn't realize they were taxed, partially taxed, but the Lions Club used to take care of it because they're in the basement. And then when they built the new building on, I think, Waverly Street, they were fully taxed, which was something that shocked and surprised them.
So, there's a difference between being tax-free and us give, these are grants.
Yes.
These organizations are taxed.
Yes.
They're taxed.
Yes.
So, our grants are, you know, we have $75,000 to give out, but then you add another
270.
271,000 because we, we, and they're valuable, they are all very valuable organizations. But they service the entire region.
Region, that's right.
Yeah, so, so I.
And I think Counselor Cleveland said that, maybe the last two years, is how do you make that balance from the first sheet when you do the grants to organizations, do you get to the second sheet where you do the grants for taxation to organizations, and how you balance the two, right? Between tourism, between support services like the Shift House, or the Tri-County Women's Center, or the Juniper House, right? So, where's, where's that balance, and what, what is it?
So, remember, it's been months ago now, and I, and I suggested we send a letter out because it's important that they know, we can't, we just simply cannot fund 100%. We sent it? Okay, good, thank you. I signed it? Thank you, that's how, that's. Now, wait a minute, Counselor Cleveland, that was more than three months ago, I don't have to remember. So, it happens when you turn 39.
Yeah, well, it happened in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's good, because it's, it's important that, that there's a heads up so that gives them another avenue to go search for the other funds.
How did we ever get to that number, Jeff? I'm sorry, my light's not on. How did we ever get to the 275 number? Do you know that?
Oops, sorry.
So.
Lights on all over the place.
How did we ever get to the 275? Uh, when we started this practice, which goes back a number of years now, I'm saying eight to 10 years, we, at the time, that was roughly the amount that covered everything. So, council had the opportunity, if they wished at, at that time, to give 100% to every organization that was on the list. And so, what we've done over time is, is basically maintain that. So, that's one thing. So, as, as we've discussed, the, the library, public library museum should not be on there. Okay, and so I would suggest to you that a, a corresponding amount of that grant shouldn't be, or, or that grant budget shouldn't be there, because it's not necessary. The other thing is that our executive assistant, while we're having this discussion, did a quick search and found that in 2015, we signed a new deal with the Rotary Club, which caused us to pay the taxes, the landlord. So, that is on us to pay the taxes.
That's why the sheet came from Jerry with the numbers in it. Counselor McLeod?
We spent hours and days working on this for such a small amount in the overall scheme of things when you, when you think of our total town budget. So, I'm prepared to make a motion that we accept the work that staff and our counselors have done with the change in the library, or, yes, so that, and the difference of the $10,000 difference approximately be spread out evenly over the other, other areas in that, in the tax grant. You know, if there's 10,000, and there's, and there's eight other, there's eight or 10 other organizations there, just take the $10,000 and, and divide it on the, on the others. I don't, I'm not going to go home and redo this anymore.
He's saying what 10,000?
Yeah.
The difference between the.
So, take the.
Public library and what they got, what they, their taxes are, what they got. It's like 9,000 or something.
Library is receiving a tax bill. It's going to take a while to untangle that. They will be in deficit if we don't pay the money until it's untangled or whatever. I don't know what you're going to do with that, but I know they get a tax bill, and that's why we've been writing the check. Because I'm on that board, and they had a lot of concern when there was a reduction in the amount we were giving them over the past three or four or five years. So, something's got to be done to inform the Assessment Department that it's a tax-exempt property so that they are not assessed, and we're not being, you know, we get the role from the P V S C. And I got a, I have a feeling that that's going to take a little bit of time, may not, but. So, let's not put the, let's not put the library offside on their budgeting, and maybe Jeff can talk with him and figure that out.
C A O?
So, I, I can't speak to whether or not Director of Finance has spoken to P V S C. We did talk about this issue. I would suggest that we just draw a line through Yarmouth Public Library Museum, and we'll handle it on our books, and we'll deal with P V S C. And we won't require them to, to pay to us. So, I'm just. I just need clarification on the 10,000, sorry. I'm a little thick. The 10,000 dollars.
Spread it out evenly.
But what, 10,000 dollars?
That.
I was assuming the 2271 and 275, 275,000 and 271, there's approximately 8,000 there.
That's 35.
3500.
That's, that's, I'm just throwing it over where it's, where it's coming from.
Save or something?
From, from the money, and then he's looking at how far we, what we gave to the public library, and he's looking at that particular thing, and if you look at that, it's about 11 or 12, when, for the full amount.
Right, so the.
But it still needs to come from somewhere, it needs to come from an original budget that's at 275,000. So, it needs to come from that in the first place. When you take that off, are we still staying with 275,000, we're giving out the grant? Or are we lowering that from 97,807 dollars? Are we lowering that from the amount of grant money that we're giving out? There's a difference here that I just pictured in my mind.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Is that just automatically coming off that, and eventually in years, we'll use a different?
Number?
Number, a lower number that matches that we're taking out for the two? And I would even see the, the one that was already set there, the Rotary Club? And I would even see the one that was already set there, the Rotary Club, I would also see that one, if we're taking it off our books, then we might have to take it off of our grant money, so there'd be two pots, it would have to, our number would come down, it would no longer be 275,000 as our...
Be 175.
Starting, well, it's at 275, that's our budget.
Yeah.
So, in years later, we would take it off our budget, so that we would only be working with 170,000 to pass out as grants, and they wouldn't show up anymore.
So, no, you're fine, I was just, so, there's perhaps more involved, so let's put it off for a month, you know, I mean, so that you can, because I don't want to put pressure on Jerry to work on something that he's not understanding from our point of view. So, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, well...
Thank you.
So, you know what we're doing? Okay, so we're clear? I don't want to get this done, it'll be next year's tax. Grants, okay, all right. Addition's approval of invoices, folks?
Some, Your Worship.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, date next meeting, April, so May is a little bit later, because we have NSFM conference.
Yeah, that's right.
We're just looking here, because it's a week later.
Yeah.
May 16. Next meeting, May 16. That we go on camera?
No, they have a motion that we have next town council meeting.
Yep, yep, yes.
Want to make your motion, Your Worship, to go on camera?
Thank you. Let's go, folks. I need to be in the city tonight, so let's make this, camera quick.
I just went a little way, but I was only, but they didn't understand, and so I was just going to take off 10%.